Welcome everyone, March 26, 2025 to the Talawanda City School District Board of Education's Special Session. We're going to start with the roll, Pledge of Allegiance, and then we're going to go into executive session. So Ms. Tofelsky, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. King?
Here.
Mr. Mead?
Here.
Mr. Otter?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Dr. Howard?
Here.
Would everyone please stand for the pledge. Thank you. It is recommended that the board go into executive session to consider the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or student; to confer with an attorney for the Board of Education concerning disputes involving the Board that are subject of pending or imminent court action; to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes; and to consider the discipline of a public employee or official. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion?
I was just going to confer, so I had emailed you about the people who would be attending executive session. Are they still the same eight individuals?
Mm-hmm. As far as I know. Any other questions or discussion? All right, Ms. Tofelsky, please call the vote.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mr. Otter?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Dr. Howard?
Yes.
The board now go into executive session.[125.57]
Welcome everyone to our special session, Talawanda City School District Board of Education. It is recommended that the board exit the executive session and return to the regular board meeting. Do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion questions? Ms. Felsky, please call the vote.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Otter?
Yes.
Dr. Howard?
Yes, thank you, all right. We are now out of executive session. The first, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. It is recommended that the board approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion or questions? Ms. Felsky, please call the vote.
Mr. Otter?
Yes.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Dr. Howard?
Yes, thank you. Excuse me, welcome to visitors and public participation. Just as a reminder, our general public participation guidelines, we have three minutes per and 30 minutes total. I will, I'll start a timer up here, give you a reminder when you've got 15 seconds less, left, please address the board with your comments and concerns. First up is Molly Farler. You might need to be closer to it.
Now, can you hear me?
Almost.
You hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Hello, Molly and Andy Farler. We are residents of Oxford Township. We have three boys who have attended Talawanda School District since preschool. They've attended Kramer. have attended Talawanda School District since preschool. They've attended Kramer, Marshall, the middle school, and the high school. Over the last 12 years of our children attending Talawanda schools, we have had amazing teachers, intervention specialists, educational assistants, administrators, staff, and community support. I could literally spend hours talking about our positive experiences with the Talawanda School District and the success of our children as a result of the support and love they have received at Talawanda, but that's not why we are here this evening. During the public comment section of the December 2024 board meeting, Scotty King spoke to the board and the audience about a security issue with Talawanda's Google calendars. At the time, Sean Brooks posted in a Facebook group the instructions for how to access those calendars. He also included screenshots of our son's IEP, the calendar event for our son's IEP meeting, and other calendar events. Sean Brooks does not have any children at Talawanda. He did not personally have the ability to access the calendars or take screenshots. Those events have been under investigation for the last three months to determine who accessed those records and gave them to Sean Brooks to share. We want to know the results of that investigation. I think every person in this room wants to know the results of that investigation. That is why we are here tonight. We read many comments from people online who are demanding transparency and accountability from the Talawanda School District and the Board of Education, and that is exactly what we are asking for tonight. We also want the results of the investigation to be released publicly to be a deterrent to anyone else who might consider doing this to us or anyone else in the future. We want anyone else who comes across private and federally protected information or sensitive information to carefully consider the ramifications of sharing it publicly. Everything is traceable. There is no anonymity when it comes to sharing protected data. Again, thank you to each person who reached out to us to support us. Many of them are in this audience this evening. We have felt very supported by our community and almost every person on that stage. Thank you.
Thank you. Scotty King.
Scotty King, Dartmouth. I get it, no one enjoys or likes being caught with their zipper down. Most people would prefer to be told that they're exposed than walk around for another decade like that. In light of this, I respectfully suggest that the school board assess the superintendent's capacity to appoint individuals who possess not only the loyalty to the superintendent but also unwavering integrity, which is not the case. Furthermore, it's imperative that a whistleblower is to be safeguarded from attacks or retaliation rather than being penalized for the courage of coming forward. I brought numerous violations to your attention, yet I regret none that appropriate actions have been taken. First infraction which involved the granting the vote yes community access to copying the student directory. The second, violation pertaining to ledgers containing sensitive information about students' disability and personal details. The third, the Google calendar, which was left accessible to anyone with a Talawanda organization in the public. Fourth, two months after the December meeting, which I did say, in February, there was, there was after the, sorry, in February, this was, was after the district supposedly addressed the issue, I was informed by a former parent, not a Talawanda org email parent, who reached out regarding to see another kid's IEP on her personal calendar, asserting that the calendars remained open under certain conditions, still to this day. So, based on the list of people that was speaking, tonight's the focus is going to be on how to, not how to fix the issue, but to complain about who potentially viewed it or is trying, or is trying to fix it. I'm amazed how the district's leadership can't accept their own fault. And this is fresh off the press, I just received it at 7:01 for an IEP for, for public records request. Last meeting where Ed said the ISA was in place before him, based on the public records request from Sean had just sent me, it's only been in place three and a half years. I think you've been here longer than three and a half years. Correct me if I'm wrong. And not to mention, thank you for letting me know that we sent our principal at Bogan to Hawaii for a personal development trip. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Item C, discussion, sharing, and next steps. All right. I'm going to read something I put together today that kind of explains where we are, where we got here. We're here tonight because, as has been mentioned, in December, a vulnerability was discovered by a member of the TSD community, that means somebody with a TSD email address. In the district's Google calendar settings, this vulnerability made it possible for individuals with a TSD email account to access calendars that did not belong to that email account and to access, in some cases, privileged documents that had been attached to some of these calendar events. Those attachments, those attachments were originally done with the intention that those documents would only be available to the individuals authorized to access them, that means the staff members and parents of students or staff members' calendar events. The district has two responsibilities in this situation. The first and most important was to immediately investigate this vulnerability, identify why it existed, and take steps to correct it to protect confidential information. That process was begun immediately after the vulnerability was announced in that public meeting, before the meeting was over even, and action was taken the evening of the 19th after that meeting and the morning of the 20th, to not only address and correct this vulnerability within TSD but to alert other districts that also use Google Suite to this potential vulnerability within Google calendar settings. This district does accept responsibility for working to correct how these calendar settings were not adequately identified and addressed earlier, and that work has not only been done, it, but will continue as district personnel, students, and families integrate with digital technology changes. Once that action was underway, it then became the responsibility of the district and the board to further investigate the actions of those unauthorized individuals who exploited and shared privileged information. We have a cyber insurance policy in place to help us respond to exactly this type of intrusion, and our insurance company connected us with a firm that specializes in cybersecurity investigations. This firm was able to employ their systems to delve into Google calendar logs to identify specific instances of access from TSD email accounts to calendars and documents, including student IEPs, to which those email accounts did not have authorized access. Less than a week ago, we received the results of that investigation. In order to act responsibly and with transparency, we scheduled this meeting at the earliest time available to make it possible for all of our board members to meet with our board counsel to review those findings. This investigation, the investigation report by the cybersecurity firm is currently still under attorney-client privilege. We need to have a resolution to release that attorney-client privilege to make the report accessible to the public for a public records request. I would like to make that motion. So, we have here a resolution waiving privilege attached to investigation report, ORC 2317.02, whereas Louis Brisbois-Biscard and Smith LLP engaged Surefire Cyber, known as Surefire, on behalf of the Board of Education of Talawanda City School District, Butler County, Ohio, Board of Education, to investigate a data exposure event, whereas the contents of the resulting documents are subject to attorney-client privilege, whereas it is the desire of the Board of Education to waive this privilege in order to release this information in the interest of transparency and accountability, and whereas the Board of Education desires to waive its privilege only as it relates to the executive summary report dated March 20th, 2025, regarding the data exposure event on December 19th, 2024, and does not waive its privilege as it relates to any other documents, communications, anything else to which privilege attaches currently covered by the attorney-client privilege. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on the 26th day of March, 2025, the Board of Education of the Talawanda City School District, Butler County, Ohio, hereby waives its privilege attached to the investigation report and authorizes the treasurer to release the document as appropriate and necessary. The treasurer is further authorized to effect all policies and procedures necessary to carry out this resolution and administer the terms of the employee dishonesty and faithful performance of duty policy in accordance with this resolution. Do I have a second for this motion?
Second.
Do I have discussion and questions? Ms. Felsky, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
No.
Mr. Otter?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Motion passes, the resolution has been adopted. Since the resolution has been adopted and we will be releasing executive privilege, or attorney-client privilege on the Surefire report, I want to just briefly summarize the primary findings of the report and the documented evidence of calendar access available in spreadsheets of Google calendar logs. Pardon me. So, we actually are talking about different documents here. We're talking about the Surefire report, which is the results of the investigation done by the cybersecurity firm. We also have a couple of spreadsheets that have been generated from Google logs. Those are not protected by attorney-client privilege, those are available for public records requests, and they show, it's just logs of action in Google Calendar to show access to email accounts, or sorry, to calendars, calendar events, in that, in a certain time range. So, the primary findings of the report and the documented evidence of calendar access available in spreadsheets of Google Calendar logs are, one, that between 11:55 a.m., and this is all Eastern Standard Time, on December 15th through 10:26 p.m. Eastern Standard Time on December, December 18th, several student email accounts were used to access IEP documents that these student accounts were not authorized to access. Two, a student email account was used on December 14th at 7:35 a.m. to access the calendar of an administrator that this student did not have authorization to access. And three, the email account of Mrs. King was used on multiple occasions between 7:45 a.m. on December 8th through 9:22 p.m. on December 16th to access both IEP documents and calendars that her email address, her email account was not authorized to access. Also at 1:53 p.m. on December 8th, the access level on Mrs. King's Google Calendar were changed to prevent access from unauthorized individuals. I want to conclude this with just pointing out, we don't know exactly who first discovered this vulnerability. What we do know is the person who first discovered this vulnerability had two options. The first option would have been to recognize the implications of accessing materials that they had no legal authority to access and to immediately cease further attempts to access unauthorized materials and then to accept their ethical and legal responsibility to report that vulnerability to the administration. In this instance, that person chose the second option, which was to further exploit this vulnerability by continuing to explore and access privileged materials and information, and rather than report it, they apparently shared it with other TSD community members who also exploited this vulnerability and accessed privileged information. It was then announced, as we've heard by Mr. King, what had been done in the public participation portion of the December 19th, 2024 meeting, which resulted in simultaneous postings of confidential student and staff information on social media before the meeting had concluded. Would my colleagues like to add anything?
Dawn, would you like to add anything?
I have a speech I want to read at the end, yep.
Well, I'll give my speech now and then reserve the right to have a speech after your speech. Wow. So, we have a member of our Talawanda School Board who knew December 8th, apparently, of a vulnerability that might put our staff's and students' privacy at risk. And as an elected member to the school board, where you took an oath of office to follow all the laws of the United States and the state of Ohio, you chose not to help the school deal with that security risk because you had some other purpose in mind. And I don't know if it's the same purpose that existed when you let out all the information about the physical security issues at Bogan and put students at risk. You know, I don't know if it's the same issue that you've had at many other junctures in our meetings where you called for the termination of Dr. Thoreau. There's an agenda, and the agenda does not seem to be the safety, both physically and privacy-wise, of our students and our parents. And it's my belief, no one should be on a school board if their agenda is not about the physical and, and safety of our students, their education, and is willing to support their privacy. You had a chance at that moment to call and say, there's an issue, Dr. Thoreau, the IT department needs to look at this, we need to fix it. After it was fixed, you could have come to a school board meeting and say, if it wasn't for me, Dr. Thoreau and the IT department wouldn't know what to do, we need to look into why it existed in the first place and how we can handle it, and rather, there should be accountability. That would have been the appropriate thing to do, but you did not, again, choose to do the appropriate thing. You chose to do the thing that fit your agenda, which I would say is different than a school board's members' agenda ought to be. December 8th, you're accessing things. December 19th, your husband comes to the school board meeting and says, we have a problem. At the end of that meeting, you said this, Dawn, after your husband told us about this problem, and you've been accessing since December 8th, going into Dr. Thoreau's calendar, finding out things about people's IEP, some of that showed up on the internet, don't know if that's directly related to you or one of the other actor, the student accounts, but you said at the end of the meeting, I also was just going to, I'm kind of confused about the email thing, the Google email data breach thing. What's going on with that? I, I don't know. Maybe that is something we need to look into. If people can actually access IEPs, student and employee information? Wow, what a disingenuous statement you made at the end of that meeting when all along you understood the Google Calendar situation. So, how is the staff supposed to trust you as a school board member when they know you knew about this in advance and you give this fake innocence of, oh, what's going on? Woe is me. Something's wrong with the district. You talked a few meetings ago that Sean and Ed were liars and you couldn't trust them. Wow, okay. I'm still waiting for evidence of that, but you said, I can't tell you that evidence because it's private. Okay. So, Dawn, I'm thinking, this is a serious violation, could get us sued, could cost the district money. It definitely hurt children, which crosses a line. It definitely violated the rights of children. And so, Dawn, what I would like, I hope your little speech is a resignation speech, because I would like you to resign so that we can move on in this district and find ethical people to do this job, because what you did was unethical and it was immoral on every grounds. Now, I assume the three student accounts that will be following up with student discipline because they violated the student code of conduct, I assume we'll turn this over to law enforcement because my reading of some of the statutes is there is a crime involved here. And I assume that we'll find out if we have further vulnerabilities because we got another email from someone who works for a group of doctors, expert at IT and FERPA stuff, who then sent me screenshots of student IEP information, which is a FERPA violation. then sent me screenshots of student IEP information, which is a FERPA violation. I'm sure her bosses would love to know that she can't even follow FERPA laws, because there's things still going on. And we need to make sure we get to the bottom of that. But I think moving forward with a criminal investigation, with student discipline investigation, and then when Dawn resigns, finding a new board member. I'll give another speech when you're done, don't worry.
You're entitled to your opinion. Okay, well, I guess I'll go next. Members of the board, colleagues, and anyone who still cares about decency, listen up because I've had enough. Far too long, I've been relentlessly harassed, targeted, and degraded by people who should know better, fellow board members and our so-called superintendent. This isn't a one-off spat or a petty disagreement. This is calculated. This just campaigned to intimidate me, break me down, and drive me out, and I'm here to say it stops now. Let's start with you, my esteemed board colleagues. You don't debate, you attack, you don't lead, you bully. And then there's the superintendent, supposed to be a professional and neutral overseer. What a joke. You've joined the pile-on twisted policies to silence me, dismissing my concerns, and letting this toxic mess fester under your watch. This isn't just about her feelings. This is a pattern, sustained, deliberate, and malicious. I've endured sleepless nights, constant stress, and a barrage of hostility that no one should face in a professional setting. My contributions are drowned out by their venom, my reputation smeared by their cowardice, and for what? Because I dare to speak up. Because I won't bow to their fragile egos. This isn't leadership, this is a damn disgrace. I've tried reasoning, I've tried rising up, but when you're cornered by relentless aggression from people in power, you don't just take it, you fight back. You've created a hostile environment that's poisoned this board, and I'm done pretending it's business as usual. There needs to be accountability for the district Google calendars being open to everyone within talawanda.org, as well as, in some cases, the public. To my understanding, the superintendent has violated numerous policies by not securing our student and staff's personal information. Instead of holding this person accountable, the board and district have deflected the problem on me. I did not share this information, and this gaslighting has to stop. Either the board is unable to see the incompetence of our superintendent to the extent he is unhireable by other districts, or the board recognizes it like the majority of the district, lacks the ability, confidence, and leadership to act on it. Well, that's not me. I'm not willing to act, I'm not willing to act on failure, especially when it's at the level of this and affecting so many children. That's a board's responsibility, and you are hiding from it. So, here's the line in the sand. I'm not going anywhere. I'll keep showing up, keep speaking, and keep exposing this garbage for what it is. You've picked the wrong target because I'm not afraid of you. This ends when the harassment ends, and not a moment sooner. Thank you.
You didn't say much about your role in this. Was what you did okay, looking at student IEPs?
I don't have to comment on that.
No, you don't. Yes, this was calculated. We arranged for you to get into those calendars. It's amazing the power we have to arrange for her to violate student rights and then hold her accountable for it. I think there's been a violation of many policies, Dawn, and I hope that you can take responsibility for your role in that. And I think the only cowards here are people like John Adams, who can't even use his real name when he posts stuff about people, and you know who I'm talking about, John, or the parents who use their student accounts to further their own agenda, hopefully that comes out later, or the people who anonymously post on websites about Dr. Thoreau's dog, who happens to be named Cuddles, veterinary clinic to try to embarrass him, but they do it anonymously. I think there are a lot of cowards out there, and it's kind of sad. But I think our job is to take care of the students in our care, to make sure we provide the staff with the resources they need to do a good job, and to be ethical and moral in our actions and transparent. I'm ashamed of nothing I've done. I would not claim that I'm a bully. I'm the person who is not afraid to stand up to the bullies. I know your husband, I believe, asked for my personnel records and my wife's. I'll take those risks in standing up against bullies. It's no problem. I know he called the Oxford Police and claimed that I carry a gun to meetings, a little poor attempt at swatting, but I'll take those chances to stand up to bullies. If you want to disagree about Dr. Thoreau's performance, that's okay. Looking at students' IEPs and helping others accomplish the same thing is not okay. Period. Every week you can come and tell us how incompetent Dr. Thoreau is, or every month, that's okay. Looking at the private information of our students is not okay. I'm not asking you to resign because you don't like Dr. Thoreau or you think he's incompetent. I'm asking you to resign because you did it something immoral, unethical, and violated the rights of our students. That's why I'm asking you to resign. I don't want it to be when the criminality comes out, we can vote you off, because we can't do that right now. You can be recalled, but we can't vote you off. I have no problem with you being against Dr. Thoreau. I have no problem with you voting differently on matters. I don't mind that at all. But you violated the rights of students. And I guess that's a badge of honor for you.
Mr. Wyatt or Mr. Otto, do you have anything to add?
I, I think I've been on the school board for like six months. And, you know, it's a little, maybe a little levity about this, but you know, my wife and children, they make fun of me when I talk about, back when I played football. You know, back when I played football, we had a wall in the locker room that the coach put up, and it was called the Can't Get Right Wall. And you didn't want to get on the Can't Get Right Wall, I'll tell you that. And there was a lot of ways to get on that wall. And it seems, since I've been on the, it's, I keep thinking about that wall since I've been on this board. Because, you know, when you're elected to any public office, I think you have a sacred obligation, first and foremost, to look after the people that run your district, employees. You have a sacred obligation to look after the students. And I think we have to take that very seriously. And I think that's really at the heart of, you know, why we're here today. And of all the issues that we've talked about since I've been on here, and there've been more than enough, this is perhaps the most serious issue. And I take it equally as serious, what happened, the fellow board member, as I do with the fact that we had open calendars. That infuriates me, to be honest with you. So I don't really know how that could happen, and I don't want that to ever happen again, I will tell you that, as a board member. Because we, as a district, equally have a role, a serious role, to take our students' and our employees' personal information in the utmost consideration, to make sure that no one could access that information. So I take both of those things equally seriously. So I think that, I think we can get to the bottom of both of these things relatively soon by taking this action.
I think most of what's been said summarizes what I have to, what I have. I don't want to bore you by repeating what they said, but I do think as a board, we need to work together to accomplish things. And if something is wrong, then we need to talk to each other about it and fix it. That's our goal. Our goal is to make the school district better, to identify where we're excelling and to work on where we are lacking. No entity is perfect. You can go to any school district and there's mistakes being made. I think we have staff here that try very hard, we have administrators that work hard. I know teachers who work overtime. I remember someone stopping me on the street to talk about how it's 8:30 at night and their son called their staff, called their teacher, and he answered and got back to them. That's the kind of dedication we have. We, as board members, need to remember, we need to work together. This isn't one-upship. We need to make the school district better. We're going to make mistakes, that happens. But if we're working together, we will accomplish great things. I think we need to continue that. And we need to remember, most of all, the important thing is to protect our students and our staff. That's all I have to add.
Thank you. I appreciate all the comments. This is clearly an emotional issue. I agree that we have a serious responsibility as board members, and much of that responsibility has been mentioned here, about protecting our students, protecting our staff, and doing our job, that we do have a responsibility. I also believe, as, well, as Mr. Mead pointed out, we have very little recourse as a board in terms of, you know, any kind of action or discipline. We can't just, you can't fire a board member. It doesn't work that way unless that board member is convicted of a crime. The one measure that we do have available to us is a statement. It's a resolution of censure. And what it, a resolution of censure basically says, we acknowledge that this behavior or this action taken by a board member is unacceptable, and we encourage that board member to no longer pursue that. I would like to make a motion to adopt this resolution of censure. Buckle in, this is a long one. Whereas each member of the Talawanda City School District Board of Education has taken an oath of office in which he or she has sworn to perform faithfully the duties of the office, and whereas the Talawanda City School District has adopted a code of ethics policy for board members, Board Policy Number 0123, which requires board members to serve with high professional and moral standards and refrain from actions locally that would substantially interfere or injure the program elsewhere. Whereas the Talawanda City School District has adopted an access to records policy for board members, that's Policy 0149, which requires board members' access to personnel and student records be subject to the board policy and applicable state and federal law. Whereas the Talawanda City School District has adopted a board-staff communications policy for board members, Board Policy Number 0167.7.1, which requires board members' use of district technology resources in accordance with the following policies and administrative guidelines, Policy 7530.02, Policy 7540.04, Policy 7542, and Administrative Guidelines Whereas Board Policy 7540.04, Staff Technology Acceptable Use and Safety prohibits the use or disclosure of student education records without parental consent. Whereas Administrative Guidelines 7540.04, Staff Technology Acceptable Use and Safety requires, slash provides, use of district information and technology resources must be consistent with the educational mission and goals of the district. Any attempts to gain access to unauthorized resources or data slash information located on district information and technology resources are prohibited. Disclosure, use, and/or dissemination of personally identifiable information of minors via the internet is prohibited, except as expressly authorized by the minor student's parent slash guardian on the Student Technology Acceptable Use and Safety Agreement Form. And personally identifiable student information is confidential and may not be disclosed without prior written permission from a student 18 years of age or older, or the parent guardian of a minor student 17 years of age or younger. Whereas Board Member Dawn King has violated the aforementioned board policies and her oath of office by: using district technology resources to access student personally identifiable information, including student IEPs on Google Calendar; not holding a legitimate educational interest in the personally identifiable student information she accessed; using district technology resources for purposes which are inconsistent with the district's educational goals, mission; and not disclosing her use, access of personally identifiable student information to the board or district administration and causing the board to expend funds to uncover her misconduct. Be it therefore resolved that this board hereby formally expresses its disapproval of such conduct by Board Member Dawn King, and through this resolution of censure respectfully admonishes her to cease and desist from any further conduct of a similar nature, so that board members, administrators, and staff may continue to work together in an environment of mutual respect and trust for the betterment of our schools and our community. Do I have a second on the motion to adopt this resolution? Failing a second, the motion will not move forward. Any other comments or any other business? All right, future board events. Our next meeting is, our April 14th, we're having a work session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions? Ms. Tofelsky, please call the roll.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Dr. Howard?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.